More boring aspects than mundane aspects of government.
We are recording.
We good?
We are good.
And when you're speaking, just be conscious of microphones, they'll catch you, but we've got three cameras recording us tonight. You're speaking, alright, that's good, but now leave it there for now, Tam. Okay, first thing we got is a quick public hearing, I think. It is a discussion of Resolution 2017-02, a resolution to adopt and amend an amendment to the 2010 Community Comprehensive Plan for the Town of Hampstead. All persons are reminded that this session is being recorded on tape for the preservation of records, and you are asked when called upon to give your name, address, and interest in the matter before the council, which is the said Resolution 2017-02. You were going to give a quick?
Yeah, I can give the resolution in a nutshell. What it is, it is five properties that are possibly looking to, in the future, annex into town. First step to do that is we need to amend our comprehensive growth plan so that the county knows that we're looking at those lands possibly down the road. A total of 341 acres. The Patmost property, the Mulkey Trenton Farms property, and the Offner property, which are all on the south side of town, basically encompassing right around and right above the southern circle of the bypass. The fourth property is the Michael Elwood property, which is on the west side of town, basically situated between the bypass and Panther Drive. And the fifth property is Crestview Meadows, which is in the northeast end of the town, or just outside of the town, back Hillcrest Avenue. All this is, this is just a plan to say in the future, these are properties we may want to annex into town. That's all it really is.
So, community planning, long-term at its finest. Does anybody have any comment related there, too? Clark?
Yes, I do.
Sorry, we've got to be a little more formal so we can...
You can walk around the other side.
Take it off.
Feel like Michael Jackson. I'm Clark Schaefer, and I represent the owners of two of those properties, the Patmost property and what was referred to as the Crestview Meadows, which we know as the Beckleyville property. I'd just like to reiterate a little bit what Councilman Rourke said, which is that this is the first step in a long process. Both of these property owners desire to be eligible to proceed, to come into the town. They understand that this is a, that any use or development of these properties is a very long-term thing that involves zoning, site plan, subdivision review, infrastructure, et cetera. We believe these are both sensible, good opportunities for the town to grow in an intelligent fashion. We understand that this has been through many, many hearings and considerations, including the Planning Commission. It's been referred out to various agencies. We appreciate your consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else related to the resolution on the comprehensive plan? Go once, twice, three times? Alright, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move right into the regular meeting of the mayor and council. Please rise for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Instead of the opening prayer, propose we do a moment of silence for the Las Vegas victims and all the wildfires in California.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tammy, roll.
Mayor Nevin?
Here.
Councilwoman Duff?
Here.
Councilman Renahan?
Here.
Councilman Rourke?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Councilwoman Unglesby?
Here.
Alright, all present in accounted for, minute approvals.
So, second.
Take your pick, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Tammy, when you're ready, the staff report.
Okay, for our Main Street Revitalization Project, the town staff attended a third partnering meeting last month. So far, the project's on schedule, and the crews are still working on installation of the BG&E gas line. And the crews that are in front of that work, they're removing landscaping and trees to clear the way for the gas lines and sidewalks. The contractor does not plan to be working north of Lower Beckleyville before the end of the year, so there will not be a construction, there will not be construction in front of the Memorial Park during the tree lighting and the Christmas market on December 1st. State Highway is going to write a public interest story on a resident in town about what the Main Street revitalization means to them. Hopefully, it will appear in the Carroll County Times and Northern Nunez soon. We had a Main Street Marketing Committee. We had our final meeting last month because we decided to dissolve the committee. It kind of overlapped with a lot of things that other organizations were doing, so we thanked the volunteers for their time, and it was suggested that they join other organizations in town if they would like to continue volunteering. Northside Estates, the development is now part of our water system, and of course, they had joined our sewer, the county sewer system also. They're just a little bit behind schedule. They put the curbs and gutter in, the roads have a stone base, and they plan to pave them this week. With the BTR property, if people aren't familiar with the BTR property, it's where Black and Decker is, I have met with a business representative interested in three of the front six acres that we zoned, general business. They hope to present a concept plan to planning and zoning at the end of this month, but they wish to keep the business name confidential until that meeting. I think our Fall Fest very well. The Hampstead Volunteer Fire Company's Fall Fest at their carnival grounds, it seemed to be a steady flow of people that came through, and many people had questions at our table about our Main Street project, so that was really good. We have a promotion coming through called Shop Local Eight Days a Week. It's a passport promotion. It's a countywide program that begins on Small Business Saturday, which is November 25th, and it ends on Sunday, December 3rd. Only small, local stores in our Main Streets can participate. So, 24 Hampstead businesses are registered, so their names will go on the passport. These businesses are given stickers to put on a customer's passport when they make a purchase at that business, and when a customer makes eight purchases at eight different businesses during that two-week time period, they can have their name entered into a drawing for a $100 gift card. The passport should be available next month at any of the participating businesses and at Town Hall. I had some news about the Hampstead Diner. I spoke to the owner, and she said due to health issues, she's putting the business up for sale. She said it was okay for me to announce that that's meeting, because she's hoping that maybe somebody would be interested in buying the Hampstead Diner and keeping it as is, as the business that it is now. We have new wells, three new wells, 33, well, they're not new wells, but they're now will be in service, wells 33, 34, and 35 that have been connected to the new pump house, and they're being tested now. Number 36 is also being tested, but has not yet been connected. The new pump house is not operational as of yet, because there's still a lot of MDE testing and prior approval, and part of the approval process. Our paving bid, as soon as we pave Sycamore Drive, the paving in that bid will be finished, and it will be complete. Memorial Park, everybody sees BG&E trimmed the large oak tree that was near the power lines. The town was advised by the Tree Commission and BG&E that the trunk of the tree is still healthy, so BG&E just trimmed the dead limbs. Bulk trash is this Saturday, October 21st. It'll be the last bulk trash pickup for the year.
That's next Saturday?
Next Saturday.
Oh, this, next Saturday, October 21st. And the residents should place bulk items curb-side on Friday evening before the pickup. And Town of Hampstead's seeking candidates for a new public works water operation, water operator position, so please see the job posting on our website under News and Announcements and on our Facebook page.
Questions for Tammy? Alright, oversight. Marlene, you want to tell us about the finishing up of a very, another successful season?
It was a very good year, as they would say. Our advisory team met last night just to go over the season. We reviewed what we thought went right, how we can improve things. I think things are going pretty well, that we're just going to leave things as it is. We're just going to try and solicit maybe some new vendors that we don't have. We're ending money, ending the season with money in the bank. Attendance was at an all-time high. We hit our goal of 23,000, so, which is 3,000 more than last year, and we are going to shoot for 25,000 next year. So, in order to do that, Sharon and I are going to be taking some time to visit other markets in the area. We'll go down to the JFX market, we'll go to Sykesville, see if any Sunday market vendors want to add a Saturday market. That way, we can add products, services, that we don't currently have for our customers. The Christmas market this year is going to be sponsored again by the Hampstead Train Station Committee, and we're very appreciative of that. The new location this year is St. John's Church, directly across the street from last year's location, and we are very excited about this partnership. St. John's is eager to have the market vendors there, and we are glad to have a place to go. The dates are Friday, December 1st, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday, December 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The market is partnering with the Carroll County Public Library to offer a special program entitled "Celebrate Innovations in Local Agriculture." And if you get, if you stop at the library and get this Currents magazine, there's a little write-up in there about it. It's going to be held at the North Carroll Branch on Tuesday, November 7th, at 7:00, and it's going to feature two of our market families, Dave and Amy Collins of Westminster, they have Collins Creek Farm, and Brandon and Megan Dodge of Rasta Farmy down in Borring. We are very excited about them. This program is open to the public, so we would just love to see a lot of our customers, not all 23,000, but a lot of our customers come and take in the program to see how these families get their products from their farms to the farmer's market. We're excited about that. I also want you to check out the October-November issue of Carroll Magazine. This features an article entitled "For Love of the Land," and it highlights another of the market's farm families, the Browers of Whispering Breeze Farm in Tawneytown. So, we're really excited about that extra exposure that the market is getting. And Sharon and I, I can guess, I can speak for Sharon on this, we're just very thankful to the council members, to the community in general, the fire department, the police department, the public works department, everybody who's had a hand in making this very successful, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Really well-done season. Wayne?
Yeah, thanks.
The Hampstead Train Station Committee had the pleasure of attending the Fall Fest this past Saturday. We had a good day. It was a little windy, but that's okay. We sold a lot of our train raffle tickets, but I still have plenty more. We're raffling off a Lionel New York Central Flyer this year. The drawing's on December 18th, just in time for the Red Suit Day, and we'll have those tickets available at the Christmas Farmer's Market on the 1st and 2nd at St. John's, as Marlene has mentioned. We're happy that St. John's stepped up, and they're also going to be providing food, so that's a big plus for us. With respect to the Tree Commission, we had our meeting on September 28th. It was very successful, made some recommendations that I've passed on to Tammy and to the town with respect to the trees that, for the park, also some items, some tree. We got a complaint about some trees on Sugar Maple Street, so we're going to come in next fall, or sorry, next spring, take out the badly damaged Bradford pears and plant sugar maple trees on Sugar Maple Street. So, goes along with what we did on Willow Street, planting Willow trees, so I think it's, it's going to be fun. Our next meeting is going to be October 18th. We have a large planting coming up at North Carroll Farms, Section 4. We've got a reforestation project going up there on the 4th. We're looking for volunteers. We're going to be planting more than 300 trees that day, so we're looking for volunteers. We're going to reach out to the scouts, and Black and Decker helped us with our last couple of big plantings.
How big are these trees, Wayne?
Oh, they're only about a foot and a half tall, so, but...
So, no hernias, it's more about bending over?
Yeah, well, if you get, you know, scouts, they don't have to bend so far, so, but it looks like it's going to be a pretty good thing. We're working with DRS, they're mapping out the areas right now, and they're going to give us a planting map, so we'll have everything marked. There are some more materials I need to pick up. I'll send you a list of what we need, and so that we can acquire that prior to it. Also, I have three members that, whose appointments are up next month. I'd like to put into new business the reappointment of those three members, so we'll talk about that when we get to new business, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Planning and zoning commission of Hampstead met on Wednesday, September 27th, 2017. First up was an initial discussion about Melanie Acres, which is a new six-lot development going in off Dana Avenue. Clark Schaefer and Dan Stanley gave us an initial look at what they're thinking for the development. Five of the six lots are approximately quarter-acre lots, the sixth lot is four tenths of an acre. Most of the discussion that we had at the meeting was centered on the stormwater management plan for the Common Use Drive. The Common Use Drive is 16 feet in width. They're looking at installing a series of infiltration berms, which is pretty common, but instead of leaving the berms on the surface, they will be burying them in stone, which is not common, so that the top would become very, would become part of the shoulder of the drive and help support it. It's rather a new technique, so I just wanted to put it out there right away so we could see it. They also presented it to Martin Covington from Carroll County Stormwater Management. We received a letter that Martin sent back to Dan Stanley, which he thought was a very good idea, so I'm sure that we will see Clark and Dan back in front of us in November with a formal concept plan. Next up was a second discussion with Florida Rock Properties about their Huxville Road Development. They're asking us to amend some of our code dealing with setbacks and height restrictions pertaining to planned unit developments. Some of the setback changes could possibly be doable, as they would bring a PUD development into balance with an R-7500 development. There is a disagreement that we're having between the commission and Florida Rock about the side lot setbacks. They want to cut the side setbacks back to match what they've done in elder developments in higher-density areas around the state. The commission's pretty much in agreement that we're not so sure that that type of development with the houses that tight together would be something that would work in Hampstead. So, some of the commission's going to look at two of their developments this weekend so we can see exactly what they're proposing, and we also realize that whatever changes we do make to the code pertaining to PUDs not only refers to this community, but any PUDs that come in the future. So, we've got to look at this very carefully and make sure we do the right thing, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Joe?
Nathan at this time.
Alright, Dave, and your Maryland tie?
Yes, my Maryland tie today. September 2017, average water usage was 363 gallons per day. October 2017, average water usage so far has been 393,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for September 2017 was 1.8 inches, and rainfall total so far for October 2017 has been 0.1, a little drought.
Thank you. So, let's see, off to the police report. Steve? Spin that around, thank you.
I'm going to talk a lot anyway, so I'll be fine. Plus off the traffic safety with our officers, we issued 172 citations and warnings for the month of September. A little more warnings than citations, so it's not really a bad thing. Unfortunately, there were 15 collisions within our town limits for current bypass at Route 42, through on Main Street, three on North Lynch Trail, and five on other side streets. Community involvement, our officers made 168 property checks with fences, schools, and government facilities. We make an appointment, Sergeant Schwartz keeps on them without making daily patrol checks on our schools throughout the day. We investigated three thefts this time around and one domestic assault. Officers made seven arrests in September, seven, all seven were adults, four for DUI, one for domestic assault and possession of CBS, one for drawing out a license, and then one for a bench warrant. Opening day at school, I was present as well. All the officers responded. We went to all three schools for opening day, welcomed the kids back. Sergeant Schwartz in the front row here, dressed up as McGruff, and welcomed all the kids, shook all their hands, and gave high fives. One thing we want to put out is school is now in session. We have overtime money for school bus enforcement. What that means is our officers are following the school buses around. If you happen to run past a school bus when the lights are flashing, probably will get cited, it's a $570 ticket, and I think it might be three points.
Thanks.
So, let's just stop for our children. We had our annual firearms qualifications. All our officers completed their training. Officer Cranchall won the top shot this year. We gave him an award. He shot 100% on all the courses of fire, so we awarded him with a trophy. Several officers attended DUI homicide training in Allen County. Lieutenant Gagel attended emergency operations planning and opioid training. And for awards, Officer Winkup obtained the Traffic Safety Specialist Certification from Maryland Police Training Commission. He was recognized at a luncheon. That's a pretty big deal. He had to go through a lot of specialized training, attend a lot of courses to get this certification. Very few do it, and then there's Certification 2 and Certification 3 as well. We've got our planning and preparations underway now for Shot with a Cop. It's going very well. There will be a silent auction on December 1st from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that'll be doing the town's tree line festivities as well, and we're looking for another successful year of our Shot with a Cop program.
Thank you, chief. Nick and Ken, anything to report on the fire department, since you're here? Sure, perfect. Fire Chief Nick Thompson.
Hi, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Nick Thompson. I'm the fire chief up here at Hampstead. Please pardon the casual dress. One of my many other hats is soccer coach, so, we practice on Tuesday, so here I am. I'd just like to thank everybody for their support over the past year. We have some preliminary fiscal year numbers ending on June 30, 2017. We responded to 1,289 EMS calls and 720 calls for fire rescue services. Of those runs, we had 54 personnel actively answering those. 10 of those were paid by us, employed by our corporation. On that note, we are hiring a full-time ALS provider and a part-time apparatus driver, if anybody knows anyone who is interested. Councilman Rourke, thank you for looking at those setbacks in the development that helps. We appreciate that.
Yep.
To the town, thank you for your support for the past year, and I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. My report relatively brief, just on Saturdays, it's become fairly routine. I go out and ride my bike and then stop by the farmer's market, and then this past Saturday, I ride my bike, stop by the Fall Fest and the little tent we had set up there. I want to publicly thank Lisa Frainey, who's part of the State Highway...
Lindsey.
Lindsey. Part of the State Highway Public Relations Department, and she spent her Saturday with Tammy answering a lot of questions about the Main Street Revitalization Project. They had some nice pictures out in front of the tent, and quite a number of people stopped and asked them, so she did that on her time, and she didn't have to do that. And then, it's good to see everybody here today, as far as the presentation that Dick is going to make later on, along with Jim, but I see Haven Shoemaker, our former mayor and current delegate, sitting in the left over there, just thought I'd point him out, and Justin Reedy, our state senator's in the back, and Marcia Herbert, well, oh, she is right smack in the middle on the board of ed, so there's, you know, some elected officials coming in to hear what's going on, as well as some members of our Planning and Zoning Commission sitting in the audience, so it's good to see everybody out. I don't think there's any unfinished business on the new business. We have the approval of a lease for a 2017 John Deere 444K wheel loader, and instead of spending all $144,000 upfront, we've done this in the past where we lease it for five years and then buy it for a buck at the end of the five, so it's basically like a, for lack of a better comparison, a car loan, and we have a very attractive rate of 2.94% provided for those five years, so...
I'll move to approve the lease. Second.
Any, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That, next, chief didn't do it, but I guess he's leaving that to me. We're going to, I guess, do a public swearing-in of Daniel Vannick, who just joined our police department. He's sitting right there in the front row. I had the pleasure of meeting Daniel, and he's transitioning from the Sheriff's Department, and Jim's still friends with us, to the Hampstead Police Department, and he lives right here in town, down in the condos in Westwood Park. So, for prosperity's sake, and he's actually awake this time, because he was working a 12-to-8 shift, and then came in and saw us at like 10:00 o'clock, so it's good to see him here, and we're happy to have him on board. We have still one more opening to fill in the police department, and I hear we're down to, both of them passed their physical and agility tests Sunday? Okay, so we're down to two folks for that one open position, and maybe we'll tell Jim he has an option there with the other one. So, Daniel?
Aye, Daniel Vannick. Do you swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Aye, Daniel Vannick. Do you swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
...to the state of Maryland...
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof...
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer of the Hampstead Police Department...
Execute the office of police officer of the Hampstead Police Department.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state...
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations. I know you guys felt like a small... Thanks, good to see you. Welcome aboard.
Alright, number two is the appointment of Michael Josick to the Hampstead Board of Zoning Appeals for a term of three years. We put out some requests for people to fill various vacancies, and, you know, a few of them roll in, and Michael caught my eye. He's a new resident, just moved up into Oakmont Green up there in Section 5, moved up from Baltimore City with his fiancee. They'll be married next month, exactly. And the neat thing about Michael, you get into zoning, and Board of Zoning Appeals can be a little quasi-judicial, and he is an actual lawyer. He just entered the bar in the Maryland bar in June, and he graduated from Western Maryland Law School, so I'll make the recommendation that we appoint Michael to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I make a motion to affirm the appointment of Michael to the Hampstead Planning and Zoning Appeals Board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Let me correct that, to the Hampstead Board of Zoning Appeals. I apologize.
I thought so. Alright, get you to the right board. And seconded it from Jim, any discussion? I know Jim talked to him, Marlene talked to him, I talked to him, Tammy talked to him. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Little more. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? Alright, Michael, you're up.
Some metal of a drink.
Is it you?
Yes.
And I'm Michael Josick.
I'm Michael Josick.
Do you swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
...to the state of Maryland...
The state of Maryland...
And support the Constitution and laws thereof...
...with the Constitution and laws thereof...
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully...
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice...
Execute the office as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the Town of Hampstead.
Execute the office as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the Town of Hampstead.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state...
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations.
More of a sign. You sign that for us, and you can sign that for you, and then Tammy attests both. She's got her blue pen at the ready.
Do you have a blue, is that blue?
No, it's black.
Your pen, blue.
Okay. There you go, sir.
I need that back.
Photo. Pen, pen.
All right, before we get in, I think we'll just roll into the other stuff, the three people you want to appoint?
Yeah, here you go. Right here. So these are three members that are currently members of the Tree Commission?
We staggered them, right?
Yes.
So it'll be Emily Wallerich, Nora Ward, and Ann Lockston, so they were one-year appointments when we did it last year, and so we're reappointing them for a term of three years?
Actually, they were two years, two years ago now.
It's been two years already?
Already, yeah.
And so, three-year appointments?
Yeah.
So I agree with those recommendations. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Reappointed to the Tree Commission, so they can plant 300 trees?
Yeah, 396, somewhere in there. Who's down?
Nora's going to do that?
We'll quickly do the adoption of Resolution 201702, which was the resolution that we had the public hearing on, which is a resolution to adopt an amendment to the 2010 Community Comprehensive Plan for the Town of Hampstead, a motion for adoption.
Make a motion to adopt a Resolution 201702, the resolution to adopt an amendment to the 2010 Community Comprehensive Plan for the Town of Hampstead.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thanks. And then, we have the introduction of Annexation Resolution 41, which is the Patmos LLC, 32 acres south of Dos Garland Drive. I guess that's south.
Yep.
It's, you know, it's on the, what I would call the east side of the bypass, right down there by the roundabout.
Make a motion to introduce the Annexation Resolution 41, Patmos LLC, 32, 534 acres south of Dos Garland Drive.
Second. Discussion?
Yes.
The only thing that concerns me about this is increasing amount of BG property we have. I would hate to see more business go outside the downtown quarter, so that's got me a little bit concerned, but we'll have time to discuss that another time.
There's another way to look at that, we're expanding the pizza. Not a medium anymore, it's a large. Top to bottom, that's another way to look at it.
Well, we didn't have so many vacant storefronts right now, I would, but things are going to be better after the bypass.
There you go.
There you go.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So, Commissioner Weaver, Sheriff Dewis are here tonight to do a presentation for the North Carroll High School Utilization Plan, and I think that you'll find this most interesting, and I think it's fairly, it's, I think, somewhat well-known what they're planning to do, but it's always good to have Dick and Jim come in and give us an update.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I know this is a great concern to many people in the community, what's happening, and I originally approached Tammy and said, you know, I need to address the council here as far as some, what's going on, and I also have to have a town hall meeting, and she said, combine the two, and we just have one meeting instead of running people out several times, so we do have a 50-acre site with a school on, an old school on it, and a lot of facilities that we need to keep in, it's in town also, that we need to keep out here for future use. So here we are, the Board of Commissioners have been giving back this building, and after we've gone through the State Board of Public Works and gone through all the paperwork, paid off all the debt, and got the final approvals, it's pretty much our building now to deal with, so we started looking at exactly what are we going to do with it. And, you know, we have some great athletic fields, and I know John has been working with the rec council and trying to keep them up and keep them going, except, we do have people parking on the grass, and as a former teacher there, let me tell you, we're going to have signs put up to keep off the grass for vehicles, because we spend a lot of time taking people out of that situation, so they will be coming in the near future. I know Marcia chased many people out parking on that grass, so.
I wanted to, on the other night, but my daughter told me about that.
I've been-
I sent you pictures, and I, Mr. Pausen is rolling river in his grave, for everyone that knew him, I'm telling you right now, that is not respectful to that nice piece of property.
And I've been tempted to stop myself, my wife stopped me, so we will be working on those.
I'm excited to know that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as far as the, you know, we did get the school back, it does belong to Carroll County presently, we've paid the debt off and we're working, what are we, how are we going to handle things? And Jeff Daggett's is with us tonight, and he's also a park and rec, Director of Parks and Rec for the county, and he's been working, I know, with the rec councils as far as the fields. But we have a beautiful stadium out here, Pausen Field is part of that, and we've, the Commissioners put up $500,000 to go with an all-weather field, and I will use the term turf, however, I don't mean the old turf fields, Jeff, I'm going to let him explain this one, is an upgraded type of turf field that we want to upgrade to, and we're starting to put out some letters as far as getting the other money available for this. We'll fund half of it, we're looking for the community to step up and fund the other half of this. And presently, boy, we've had a lot of people working. I know Marcia has been working, Jeff has been working on some of these, as well as other people in the community, starting to really, Kenny, I know, has made some contacts and things out here, to start coming in, where's this money going to come from? Get some of these large firms looking at it, so that we can have whatever stadium at, Pausen Field at whatever stadium out here, and that's one thing that we do have to keep at that area, it will be Pausen Field no matter what. But it will be a stadium name, and we have other opportunities for some signage. And Jeff, I'm going to bring you forward here, talk about some of those areas before we move on, and look at some of the things we have as far as the signage and opportunities for businesses and people in the area to do that. And we also have Roberta Windham, our county administrator, with us here tonight, so.
Good evening. Jeff Daggett's, Director of Recreation and Parks for Carroll County. First of all, before I forget, because it's a smart thing to do, I want to thank the Commissioners for making, continuing to make the building at North Carroll and the fields available to the community. The rec council has had a tremendous amount of use over the years, I know many of you are aware of that, some of you coming off of soccer fields, if you're coaching, we want to preserve that. And the first thing that's going to happen at the site, the indoor facility, the gymnasium, the auxiliary gym, the wrestling room, they've been available for rec council use before, after-school activities, that will continue. The only change is there won't be school activities to schedule around, so not only do you preserve your usage, you're actually going to have more usage than you had before. The athletic fields, it's the same, basically the same situation. You had usage before, but it was around the high school teams. Now you will have usage, and there are no high school programs to compete with, so there should be expanded usage there as well. The stadium, that Commissioner Weaver mentioned, that is something that was never available to rec and parks in the past. Because of that, there really was no net effect on North Carroll Rec Council. We are viewing that as a countywide facility, and we are looking to put an all-weather field, not turf, all-weather field there. The Commissioners were thoughtful enough to budget $500,000 in the current year's capital budget towards the completion of this field. That's the good news. The challenging news is that those fields cost in a neighborhood of $1 million to construct. So, in the budget, it's very conveniently and creatively listed as community support for that other $500,000. What we're trying to do is raise that additional money. We're looking at advertising, sponsorships, we're looking at donations that would come into our park legacy fund, and we've started the process for both of those. We had about 30 letters, I think we have more than 30 people here tonight, so I apologize for that, but you have copies of the letters that were sent out to a number of local businesses. There was also a press release that went out, looking for any potential donors. The dollar amounts for these donations range from $3,000 on the low end to $40,000 on the top end, that is for naming rights. $40,000 sounds like a lot of money. There's also a 10-year term with that, so it's even more money. We did a lot of research of different places around the country, in similar examples, we saw on the low end about $20,000 to $25,000, on the high end it was $75,000 per year. So that 40,000 figures, kind of in the middle, actually a little bit on the low end, but that would give us the money we need to move forward. We're also soliciting for donations from our recreation councils, from our volunteers, from our parents. I can tell you that probably two, three phone calls a week, we traveled here, we played on a turf field, why don't we have a turf field in Carroll County? This is an opportunity to get that turf field. It'll be used by all different rec councils, it'll be used by all communities, it'll be a host for regional tournaments, and it's a chance to bring people to the Town of Hampstead, and hopefully bring business to the Town of Hampstead as well. When people travel here, they will eat in the restaurants, they will buy gas, so, you know, we're encouraged by this, we've had nibbles from some local businesses, no bites yet, but we are encouraged, and we do believe there's an interest out there, so we're going to continue to push for this, try to get the word out. If any of you know of businesses who may be interested in participating, if you have the letter, please pass it on. Don't leave it on your kitchen table, share it with somebody. If anyone you know of might be interested in pursuing it, have them call me, and I would love to talk with them. So at this point, I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions, I don't want to eat up too much of Jim's time.
What about signage, rather?
The signage, that we're looking at, the different locations at the school, ticket booth, logo on the field, also, naming rights would have logo on the field and also on the sign, the electronic sign out in front of the school, dugout on the adjacent baseball field, logo on the track, logo or signage on the concession building, and then also on the press box. And in the letters that were passed out, there's also a fee schedule in there, so you can see the different dollar amounts and different terms. Again, we believe it's attractive, we have a nice range of prices, so businesses, small and large, can both participate. And again, we're very hopeful that the business community will come out and support this, and then we're ready to move forward with the construction of the field at that point. Yes, sir?
Can the schools be maintained, if necessary, or will they continue public access there?
The goal would be to have those maintained, I know they really need some work right now, there is no money in our capital budget now to move forward with that, so that could be a future capital project, and that is separate from the stadium fundraising effort. Yes?
The information passed out, is it available somewhere on the internet, is it accessible?
It's in the process of being posted, we just put the press release out today.
We can have it in our file.
Yes, absolutely. The more places we can get the word out, the better. Yes, ma'am?
From a PR standpoint, I've seen a lot of comments from people outside of our community that think that the, you know, the investment in the field is not going to be a basic one, it's like, people still can't seem to differentiate that this is not an investment for the school anymore, this is an investment for the county rec. So what can we do from our standpoint, to try to get more people to support this?
Well, I can tell you from the people that we work with on a daily basis, there's a tremendous amount of support for it. Again, these programs are traveling now, not just rec council programs, but school programs also, they spend an awful lot of money in transportation to go to a field out of county to pay someone else to use that field. So I do believe, especially with the business component and donations supporting this effort, I do think that there will be widespread support for it. Mm-hmm? Ken?
If we're in the building, and I think it's going to be discussed tomorrow at the rec council meetings, we're looking at trying to help post the Berline Duel, the high school event at North Carroll, which I think is still there by degrees, but high school events are Friday, Saturday, we're typically night times and Saturday, Sunday. Is that going to interfere with the Sheriff's Department or anybody using it, or is that workable, is that doable?
We've had conversations already regarding the scheduling, and I'm very confident we'll be able to work together.
They submitted a form, in the form of a proof, but you know how that is, everybody's heard about it.
Right.
I'm here to tell you on my end of work, I want that to be, so they won't have any difficulty.
And it's actually great security for the building as well, having that presence there, you know, we're very happy with that, we want to see the building used, and we'll be doing the scheduling, so rather than, you know, the principal at a school that we deal with will actually be the one signing off and scheduling it, so I think that'll work fine. And again, we have a great working relationship, so I have no worries about that.
Why are you here? You just mentioned the auditorium.
Yes. Yes, there is no place on that fundraising forum for the auditorium, but maybe there should be. That'll be next. We do have a few things that do need to be completed, some routine maintenance, and once that is done, that facility will be available for use as well. There's additional improvements that'll need to be made down the road, some lighting improvements, seats are in good condition, and we know there's a lot of programs that would look to use that. We're blessed with a beautiful arts center, Carroll Arts Center in Westminster, however, it has very limited seating. This auditorium can handle much larger events and concerts, so we want to see that used as well.
Any other questions?
Call under armor.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I had Jeff define some of the things inside, as far as recs and parks, where we're going. I think, you know, there's going to be some bugs here to work out, but everybody, all the players here are willing to work through them, so that's, it will be some glitches. I think this week, they had a pickleball tournament out there with about 100 people, didn't know what pickleball was, but at least it's one of the things they've tried to work through and use the facilities. You realize that facility's sitting empty, it costs us about $300,000 a year just to sit there, just to maintain it, so we're trying to get it used and workable. With that, Sheriff Dewis is going to have his Northern District move into the one outside access in the lower area, but he had asked to come with the Carroll County Police Training Academy, and they have really done a lot of work in a very short period of time. I think the first academy opens up November 6th, and hopefully Hampstead has their first officer trained in that academy as well as throughout the state, so Sheriff, if you-
I'll probably take him after he graduates.
He's a little sore right now, losing an officer, but that's all right. Just want to take a minute and share what it looks like.
I'm a politician, Dick, I never take just a minute. So, how did we get to the point where I'm running a police academy out of the North Carroll High School? In full disclosure, my wife taught there up until the day it closed, she taught history and psychology there at the school. One of the areas we looked at initially was actually where she was teaching at the time it was closed, and she's been since transferred up to Manchester Valley High School, and she also uses it throughout the summer and now for basketball, and if you know anything about the Dewis family, I'm more popular for being a, the husband of Heather Dewis and father of Mackenzie Dewis than I am for being the sheriff. Fabulous basketball family, and so they use the facilities regularly. North Carroll High School is one that we like an awful lot, and Heather uses it during the summertime, and she currently uses it now. So I'd be in a lot of trouble if I didn't have it open for wrestling, basketball, and whatever else anybody else needed it for. And Jeff is right, I don't schedule, I will not schedule the athletic events that go on there, we go through, we go through Jeff's shop to schedule gymnasium and the rest of the things that are out there. So how did we get to the point where we want to run a police academy there? Commissioner Weaver and I had discussed after North Carroll High School closed, what do we do with such a large amount of space? And I currently have criminal investigators that are assigned to the basement of the library, if you don't know that, up in Greemount, and it's a very small space, I have also crime scene technicians there, I have all the property and evidence that is there for the Sheriff's Office is there, it's about 8,000 pieces of property that are at the Greemount Station. So I needed space, and I need space badly. I have approximately 119 deputies, I have 100 deputies on the corrections side, so I have about 275 employees out of the Sheriff's Office, and so I was- library, if you don't know that, up in Greenmount. And it's a very small space. I have also crime scene technicians there. I have all the property and evidence that is there for the sheriff's office is there. It's about 8,000 pieces of property that are at the Greenmount station. So I needed space and I need space badly. I have approximately 119 deputies. I have 100 deputies on the corrections side, so I have about 275 employees out of the sheriff's office. And so I was in desperate need of space collectively with everything I have, including a Greenmount down south, work release detention center, I have just under 45,000 square feet total and that's including where I house inmates. It's woefully inadequate for what I'm trying to do. I need to have a northern district, I need to have something down south. I need something that's really a part of the community where if you can't go to the Hampstead Police Department, you can come over to the sheriff's office. And you actually have to have a place that you can go and find a physical person to communicate with and up north, I don't have that. Nor do I have it down south, but I'm committed to getting that done. So we get to the point where we start talking about North Carroll High School and how do we work it so that it maintains the integrity of the high school, that I don't change the footprint at all, but I go in and use the space that's there. So Commissioner Weaver and I pretty much went through the building and identified a decent space. Ironically, it's, I think it was built around you. So Dick was there and then they built the school around him. And so they said, "You teach here." And so he taught there for 38 years. And so it's in the shop area adjacent from the bathrooms downstairs, the gymnasium downstairs. It kind of stretches all the way to where the steps are that lead up to where the cafeteria and upper level are. That's about 13,000 square feet. And if you pull into the backside of the school or to the side of the school where the loading dock is, that loading dock will stay the same and just towards Panther Drive from that are several classrooms that we've taken and put a police academy in. And people are saying, "Why a police academy?" Internally or externally, the biggest issue in law enforcement is obviously the opioid issue, crime that takes place in your community. But internally, if you ask any police chief or sheriff throughout this country, they'll tell you recruiting, hiring, and retaining police officers, sheriff's deputies, and state troopers is the biggest issue that we have unilaterally in law enforcement. And so the issue I have is that I have openings. And so I have a pretty large police force and I have to wait for some other agency that runs a police academy to say, "Hey, we're going to run a police academy. Do you want to put a couple of deputies in it so that you can train them?" I don't have time to wait for that. And usually it's, "Hey, do you want to put two or three people in my police academy?" And so I send two or three people there, I wait a month or so, and I try and get someone through a process and I send two or three into another area. And so it was just getting a little old and I needed police officers now and I needed something that I could help the other local law enforcement agencies and agencies statewide if they wanted to send their individual police officers or sheriff's deputies to our police academy. So we decided we would look at space there. We looked at the space, when you walk into the gymnasium part of it and Mrs. McDonald is my, in charge of administrative services for me, so when you walk into where the gymnasium is, you see that section just to the right where the door is and the six windows. That section that stretches all the way back to where the loading dock is, is where the police academy will go. We're in the process now of taking out the gym set there, the playset, the fence that goes around it, and that magnolia tree, Mr. Weaver said, "I cannot take it down," so we are pruning it so that it looks appropriate. And then there's a raised flower bed that was put there for Mr. Weaver after he retired. So we're knocking that down. I'm just kidding, we'll keep it. So we're keeping it to make him happy. So we're keeping that. And then we went in and I went in with really cheap labor because I have it in the form of 200 people that are sitting in my jail. So we basically went through and said, "Who can paint and who's a carpenter?" And they raised their hand and I said, "Okay, let's go." And so we went up to North Carroll and we pretty much used Jeff's folks, Jeff Castiglione's here, Jeff, director of Public Works for the county, outstanding group of people. I couldn't do what I do without Jeff's people, Jeff Degetz, the people that are directing certain portions of the county, I can't do it without them. They send their facilities folks up, they work with my inmates and some of the folks that I have, and they've completely gone through and stripped from those windows all the way down to where the loading dock is and cleaned it up so that it mirrors what a police academy classroom should look like. So that used to be the driver training room where you would have gone in and done your driver training and most of us that are in your 40s know that there used to be these big things that sat there and you would sit and steer it and there's all these candle lights over top of it. But what we did was we stripped the floors and all we did really was go through and clean it and paint it. And they had all these really cool, long whiteboards all over the place in the school, so we procured them and some of the chairs and stuff there, we had to purchase, but all we did was go through and clean that. That's the primary classroom that the police academy recruits will be in. We're looking at about 20 to 25 recruits that'll come up. If you remember what that was, so that's where the home economics took place, where you would go in and all the foods classes would take place. So what we did was we stripped everything out of there except for one section so that we can actually have a break room for the recruits and for my deputies that are there. And then we took everything out beyond that, stripped all that and painted it and basically just put tables and chairs there for the recruits to sit and eat. And then to the right of that, you can't really see it in that lower picture, are, there'll be lockers there for them and it's amazing, there's like thousands of lockers in that place. So we were able to grab those, we sanded them down, painted them. All those cabinets were sanded down and repainted. We did new countertops and new sinks. And then on the other side of that is a larger classroom and Dick, what was that, that was there where the?
Charlotte.
Okay, so really all we did there was strip everything out, we reused an awful lot of stuff, cleaned the floors up, areas that we picked up cabinets that had bare floor underneath of it, there were those tiles, those same tiles all over the school. And so we put those down, buffed everything and made a break, well, that's a room for all my instructors that are there for the day-to-day operation. So what was uniquely situated there was there's a gym right outside of those doors, there's a weight room right outside of those doors, there's shower rooms right outside of those doors, everything I need to run a police academy and there's a ton of outdoor space for them to run and new recruits really like to run a lot. And so they'll get really a lay of the land of the entire facility. And so all we did was we went back through some of the rooms and we just cleaned them up and repainted them. We gave them a lot of, a lot of attention and care. And so I want to say that I've probably got total in things to clean the space up and make it what I need it for a police academy. Aside from the, some of the furniture I had to buy, I've probably got about $3,000 and everything. So I did it on a shoestring budget, but we've been able to get accreditation for a police academy rather quickly. The Maryland Police Training Commission came in, looked at our facility, they love it, they looked at our entire lesson plan, they really like it an awful lot, and they accredited us. They're coming to do a site visit sometime here in the very near future before we start our November 6th class. Chief of Police for Ocean City Police, who happens to have a residence here in town, Ross Pizorro, his son went to North Carroll High School. He's the Ocean City Police Chief, but he also maintains a residence here. He wants to send his police officers to our academy. He liked the fact that we were running it out of the old North Carroll High School. He liked the fact that we didn't go in and demo everything, that we kept the footprint the same. And, you know, the timing for him is that our police academy will graduate his officers so that they can get right into the spring and the summer in their busiest, busiest time. So a lot of people are very interested in sending their academy recruits to us. And so we're in the process of getting that set. November 6th is our first class, we are running it then, and then we're doing an open house on November 2nd. So anybody that's here in the town council and I've sent, I'll send invitations out to folks, but I'm telling you here that you're welcome to come over and walk through it and see what we've done to the facility. And then I'll also give you an idea of what we're going to do with the remaining 13,000 square foot. I met with architects today and we're in the process of drawing up the designs for that. And I will warn you, that's going to be a complete demo of that area there. So that 13,000 square feet will have deputies, crime scene techs, criminal investigators that are going in and out of that building. But I think that Mr. Weaver and I were, really wanted people to understand that when you pulled into the front of the school, that you're not going to see sheriff's office and that's the first thing you see. Everybody wants us close by, but they don't want to live next to us. And I get it. So we will discreetly and quietly be in a part of the building that you'll know we're there, but it won't be the first thing you see. And it'll be accommodating to the community, you'll be able to go there and if you don't get a deputy, you'll get one on a line that's outside the door rather quickly. And my detectives, my crime scene folks, and everybody will be there. And how soon do you think you'll see that? We're in the process, I'm hoping, I think that, what did they tell us today, probably by December of 19, July of 19, we should be in there with the, with the construction done. Let me dispel this rumor, no detention center's going there. I've heard that 100 times, I don't know where that came from. That's a self-fulfilling prophecy for someone that wanted to sabotage something, but it simply is not going to happen. That has never been discussed by Dick and I, never. That's not going there. No women's detention center, no free-range chicken farm, I've heard them all. I have heard everything. I'm sure Rogers would like a free-range chicken farm up there and a pig farm, but that's not happening. Our goal is to maintain the building the way it is and use the space that's there. And I think that with us there, there'll be a bit of security for folks. And the other thing that I will likely work on with Jeff and some of the roads folks is putting some calming devices there, a little bit more lighting as you walk from the parking lot that everybody parks at and traverses over to the gymnasium. It's always been a fear of mine that somebody's going to skew through there and hit a child that's, that's coming by. Dick and I have discussed that, I've discussed that with some of the roads guys. It is something that we want to look into to make sure that we slow everybody down almost to a stop so that they, they know that they've got to stop and let people go across. So we're trying to do the right thing with the building and I think this is a good, a good avenue for it. Where we go from there with the rest of the building, I don't know and I really don't care. I know that I need space there and I need it soon and I'm working in that direction. The rest of it is for the commissioner and his folks to decide, but, but we're going there, we'll be a good partner, we'll be a silent partner, but we'll be there for the community and for local law enforcement. Any questions? I never leave without anybody asking, I knew it, yeah.
There're not going to be any firing ranges.
No, no firing ranges, no, we are going to use the track for high-speed driving.
Please, please tell them you're joking.
Yeah, I should say.
Please tell them you're joking.
I could be doing any bomb training or any type like that, right?
No, no. You've got something you want to tell me?
Just checking.
Yeah, no, no, none of that. So we have facilities down in Southern Ended County that have the high-speed driver training track and then we use Hat Baker for, at the landfill for, for firing ranges. You will see and you will hear our recruits in town, they'll sing as loud as they can at inappropriate times, they don't wake you up. But you will enjoy hearing and seeing them through town and you'll enjoy a little bit of vibrance in the, in the school. It's pretty neat when you see a paramilitary police academy show up. I was a state trooper for 25 years. I was trained in Pikesville and before that, 5,000 troopers were trained in Pikesville. And the folks in Pikesville loved the fact that the state police trained its recruits there because they would set their clocks to hearing them sing in the morning. They would come over and watch them get yelled at, they would do, they were a part of the community. And it was a depressing thing for Sykes, for Pikesville when we moved out of there and we moved to Sykesville. And it was very traumatic for everybody that lived there because we took a part of the community that had been there for almost 70 years away from them and put it in Sykesville. And for me, I just think that, that you guys will really get a kick out of it and you'll see them, you'll see them running around, you'll slow to a stop and you'll get your kids out and say, "Look, this is what, this is how they train." And I think you'll really enjoy it. They'll be a part of the community also. They'll have assignments that they're supposed to take care of, they'll, they'll be here trying to make something better in your community before they leave and go back to where their, their home agency is, whether it's mine or, or somebody else. Yes, sir?
Is there a room or need for a helicopter landing site in a facility like that?
No, no, there really isn't.
Which is not part of the sheriff's office?
No, and I tell you, the helicopter system is, you know, they bring it out for a lot less because it's really big and it costs an awful lot of money. So, you know, they're very, very particular about what they use it for. I could land that helicopter anywhere around there for any particular reason, but not, not necessarily a landing pad for it. So we never even discuss that. Sir?
Twenty-four hours a day?
I won't say that it's 24 hours a day, but they'll, initially, my intent is to have coverage there and down south and in every part of the county when it comes to having stations and, and command there, you know, 24/7. But initially, no. But with the fact that my criminal investigators, patrol deputies, and crime scene techs will be working out of that facility, there'll be an awful lot of movement in and out of it, it's just inevitable. My investigators and crime scene techs are out at O'Dark 30 regularly. So it'll be a lot of movement in and out of there, but, but it should be quiet and it shouldn't bother the community at all. Sir?
We're about to, I would follow the student-
Good question. So most of the students that, the recruits that will come in my agency will, will be from here locally, that will drive here. That was one of the things that we wanted to be able to entice folks that were from different jurisdictions to come here and train their recruits with me. So we reached out to McDaniel College. McDaniel College happens to have several houses on their compound that are there for visiting professors that need temporary housing for one reason or another. And so we, we went to them and said, "Do you have that?" They conveniently have it at a very cheap rate and so they've offered it to us and we're in the process of putting it together. We've brought Chief Pizorro up so that he could look at the housing. He's completely satisfied with it and in fact, it'll work probably better than sending them to a hotel or, or something like that because it's, it's substantially cheaper. So the housing is going to work out wonderfully for us with McDaniel College. So I know it's kind of out in left field with, "Where did you come up with McDaniel College?" But I, I'll give Mrs. McDonald credit for that because she's the one that reached out to them and said, "What do you have?" And they were more than happy because they had very nice houses sitting. And so they'll go into a short-term lease with us, I'll house my recruits, recruits there and I'll build a host agency for the expenses for, for the residents. So it'll work out wonderfully. I've got Allegheny County that's looking, I've gotten Queen Anne, St. Mary's, we're all looking for police academies. That's why I'm doing it because I, I need to go on my schedule when I need recruits trained. My intent is to run a police academy, a law enforcement police academy annually. We're looking at September for the next class, November 6th we'll start this class, run it through, September will be the next class. And then I will also likely run correctional academy classes out of there. I'm looking at one a year, once we get established with law enforcement because I oversee corrections and I have the same need. Their academy's a little different, it's a slightly smaller, it's 10 weeks, 12 weeks, somewhere around there. So it's a little smaller, but I will likely run, run those also. My in-service will take place there, it already is taking place there. We do defensive tactics, ground fighting, we're using one of the wrestling rooms for that now. We use the classroom for in-service for my deputies, both law enforcement and corrections. So we're currently using it. So when you drive by and look in the parking lot, we're there for in-service now. Yes, sir?
What's the range in size of classes? I can think about that.
I don't think I want to go any more than 30. So I think that's an appropriate number for the amount of instructors that I have that I'll handle it. And we will use, I've already talked to Steve about using his folks for traffic stops, for other instruction. We will use, you know, teachers from all walks of life to come in here. It won't be just my deputies that teach everything, not only in the classroom, but out at the range, driver training track, traffic stops, those sort of things. It'll be a mix of, of everybody that's, that's involved in law enforcement in the county. It'll be a good thing for them, too. Anything else? By the way, tonight is my, today is my 19th wedding anniversary and so I brought my, yeah, I brought my lovely wife to the Hampstead Town Council meeting. And let it be known, I took her to Dunkin' Donuts before this so that, and so I'm in a lot of trouble for, for being here tonight, but I'll, I'll survive. But I wanted to tell my wife I'm sorry, but-
You didn't have any choice.
I didn't really, yeah. Mr. Weaver-
Hopefully there's, there's the weekend and you make it up on Saturday.
Well, you have to, yes. Thank you. Now, you have a little bit of an insight in those type areas. The commissioners also have quite a bit of square footage we have to decide what to do with. And on the 21st of September, we sent the Board of Education a letter stating that in the spring of 2019, they will be moving to North Carroll High School as the Board of Ed. And Jeff's been working with, planning how to design that and put it together. And keep in mind, that building is designed, all those walls are movable inside. I mean, we moved them for years for classrooms, all kinds of things. It's supported straight up with steel pillars and brick on the outside, block and brick on the outside. So anything can be shifted inside and it can be shifted back without much problem. So we have basically given the Board of Ed an eviction letter and said, "You will be moving to North Carroll." So we'll wait and see how that, well, it will work out. I'm positive of that. That will be the front wings, A and C wings, part of the, the top floor and probably the office areas in those areas. And we were in the building just a week or so ago, air conditioning system has to have airflow and we have to be careful how we partition things off because we have to have airflow through that entire building because those hallways are part of the handler system, air handler system and air conditioning. So, we know we have some things to do, but we will put it together. And I think the spring of 19, you will see the Board of Education at North Carroll High School. That gives us about 40,000 square feet that we have unencumbered at this time. And this is areas, the old bandroom area, health area, down in some of those areas and maybe even it could be the English or socialized area, whichever wing that's there, that I've been putting some thought into. And, and I just, some examples of this, you know, we have the cafeteria community center would be a possibility in some of this. We have, we used to have all kinds of activities in there throughout the winter or throughout the months, so they're still there. The other day I was, we had the Boys and Girls Club come to us about, in Westminster, about their program. And if you're not familiar with it, it's a fantastic program. And I haven't mentioned this to anybody yet, but an example would be Boys and Girls After-School Program in there, three to six, 200 kids and part of that program would be a possibility. I haven't mentioned this to the town or anybody, but I'm just coming up with some examples. As we get these other things in place, we're going to have about 40,000 square feet in here that we're going to have to utilize. And somebody's going to come up with some good ideas on this, I'm sure. And right now, we're, we're moving forward with everything. In Northern District for the Police, the Training Academy is first up. The field, I think Jeff will have that in place at six months after we get the money, I think he can be in place and be up and running for that stadium. This is going to be good. One thing I did want to mention on that, we have a concession stand. And we're going to have to decide between the town and county what we do with that. It's probably not going to be, able to be manned by volunteers, it's going to be in too much demand. So I'm looking at maybe how we can work with that, but we'll be discussing that later. But that's one thing we're going to have to look at for future use. We get this field up and running, we have the beautiful block building there, brick building and concession stand, everything, a lot of it's in place. We're going to have to do some thought in how we're going to handle that in the future. But we have to get the field in place first and we don't want to step on toes of Parks and Rec, or Rec councils, but yet we have to maintain this facility. So the facility is going to stay the same, basically, the outside's going to look very much like it does today. If, when we need a school back, it will not be hard to change back. And that's going to be down the road sometime in the future. But, you know, I spent a, I opened that school, I spent a great deal of time there and I think we're going to need it again, it's just when, and so it's going to be available for that. So, in the meantime, we have to utilize it and we have to utilize the space. So, I'm open for questions from the crowd. Haven?
Mr. ... Well, the Board of Education, I'm not including Marcia, but the Board of Education has indicated a paramella hostility, so it's this notion of moving to North Carroll along with the end of the year. What, what can the community do to express, you know, support for the notion of them moving to North Carroll? I mean, I know one of the complaints was, was 20 minutes up the road, although, you know, they didn't seem to blink too much at the notion of moving down to Windsor, which was 20 minutes down the road. So, I mean, what, what can folks do to communicate to them the silliness of this idea of building them a new $4 million building or $8 million building or whatever, when we have a perfectly good building here?
There's going to be no new buildings. My personal thought on that. But, you know, as an elected official, the biggest thing that hits you is a phone call, a letter, let them know that this, what the expectations are. And when you get, I mean, I get 100 emails, whoa, this is really a topic people are concerned about. And I think just being vocal and letting people know that it's good for the town. Town of Hampstead has taken a big hit in this process. We're trying to bring some of that back in, into the town and trying to get things back into this town that have helped the town grow and, you guys are on your way to some fantastic things in the future. But if this building and this grounds can help that along for a while, I think that's where we're trying to go with. So, I appreciate your help there, but just get out, be vocal on this, let people know what you're thinking. That there's no reason, you know, I always did say, you know, a school is not about the building, it's about the teachers, it's about the kids. Board of Ed's the same thing, it's about the people. It's not where you are, it's about the actual people there doing, you can work anywhere. Most people work, chief, you probably walk out of your car half the time. I know Bob, you do a laptop and not even in an office a lot of times. So, you know, it's not about the physical building sometimes, it's about being able to do the job and just the people doing the job. So, I would be vocal and let people know exactly what you think. That's the best, best way to handle that, I believe. Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
... for helping us. I feel very encouraged about being a candidate for the president. I've been a candidate for 61 years and I thank you very much. I think the loudest credit goes to you.
Well, I appreciate that, but we have a delegation, everybody's helped on this.
I realize that, but I see, I've seen your leadership through all this. You moved to North Carroll High School and it's a wonderfully, wonderful state that you've run. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Dick.
I've got to say, I'm from Manchester, I thought alarms would go off and you guys looked at your building.
You thought about that.
I obviously couldn't vote for you or any of those people up there, some of these other people, but Town of Hampstead and you, Dick, you've got a thank you for the fight prior to school closing, but it's, it's going to be a nice community facility and, and it's not easy.
We're making lemon, lemonade out of lemons here. I mean, it's not a good situation and Haven, we might have to get the Health Department on, he, in case you're not aware, Haven one time cut the Health Department budget after they shut Boy Scouts down in town for selling lemonade. So, he thought it was a little absurd and he hit them pretty hard, but I think we're, you know, without, without that problem, I think we'll be in good shape. We're trying to do the best we can here, given the circumstances we have. I appreciate the help from the town, you guys have been fantastic so far and we're going to be working together, I think, in the future even more. We have a lot of little things to get through, but, but the major ones, if we get through these, the small ones, I think will come in place. And Marcia, thank you for coming out tonight. She's been great as far as board member to help work through things and I tell you, this isn't a very easy job. Haven lied to me. No matter what, you mean, you know, Roberta keeps me straight here where I have to go, but I mean, and keep me on even keel sometimes. But it's, no matter what I do, it's not going to be right by everybody, I know that. But we're trying to do what's best for the Town of Hampstead and the community with what we have. And we'll still have our school, we'll have our site when we need it, it's there. And I appreciate your, let me speak tonight and bring some people in to update what's happening in this area.
Our pleasure, Dick. It's not the first time he's been here in front of us, he's kept us fully informed all the way along and he really is making lemonade out of some really sour lemons. We look forward to what Jim's doing. I think, you know, having, having a recruiting class rolling through town, you know, a lot of visibility, it's a force multiplier to what we already have with the outstanding department we have. And what's, what Dick is doing is really an efficient repurposing of a building, both building and site, very economically done and maintaining the integrity of that building so that when the day comes, not if, but when the day comes, that we can convert that building back to its rightful purpose, which is a school. So, you know, it's, it was, it was a hard thing and I, a lot of the people in this room, I know you all were very vocal, you showed up for the public hearings, a lot of you went into your own pockets and wrote checks to help us with the appeals that were done. And it really is appreciated from everybody up here and from, from Dick and everybody involved in the county as well. So, and the fact that, you know, we have a full house here tonight just speaks volume for, for what that building and what that school means to the community. And we really want to keep it in its best possible shape so that in no time at all we can flip it around and make it a school again. So, thank you everybody for showing up, it really makes a difference. And the, and the last thing I'll say is, what can you do, somebody asked that question, three Board of Election seats are up for election next November and the primaries in June. You know, and Marcia's sort of on the side of the county, but it would certainly be good to have a reasonable and rational voice from the side of the county on that Board of Ed. It makes all the difference in the world. So, you know, all the way down ballot, it makes a difference. I mean, I can't tell you, even up here, and we've had one vote make a difference before as to who's sitting at this, at the Asken, who's not. So, you know, put that in the, in the back of your mind as well and, and get the word out. So, is there any other public comments of a general nature? Yes, sir, how you doing?
Hi, how are you? You don't need to, oh, you there or you want to sit back here?
You're good.
Okay. So my name is Jason Pelton. I normally serve the Town of Hampstead on the K-1 Regulatory Commission. I'm actually here on behalf of Hampstead Elementary School. I'm serving as their Community Advisory Council Representative. We found out at the first meeting last night that they are sending out, the Board of Education is sending out a survey in regards to school closures. We were told that there is a potential for school closures as soon as 2019, the fall, at least that's what the superintendent told us. So, the concern that we had was...
Steve, can you repeat that again?
Yes, so a survey is coming out on Friday to citizens of Carroll County in regards to the mental health school closures. Are you not aware of that, I presume? Okay, it was brought to our attention at the, at the CAC meeting last night. Obviously, the concern we have is, is, you know, the Town of Hampstead is recently recovering from a, you know, a school closure. The survey is going to be available to anyone who is a citizen of Carroll County, that includes businesses, et cetera. So, I am basically here to say that as the information for these surveys comes out, please fill them out and return them. Please make your voice heard long before any of the schools in our area become a target for a chopping block. Like I said, this is, you know, this, we were just informed about this last night and we weren't given very much notice. I had a meeting with our principal over at Hampstead Elementary, she was not aware of this. So, yes, ma'am. Well, the Community Advisory Council, we were informed by the superintendent, by District Attorney. This is, the Community Advisory Council meets a few times a year, they are...
It was last night?
Yes, it was last night. Every school in Carroll County has a representative. So, I spoke with our representative over at Spring Garden Elementary. You know, obviously, our concern for both of those schools is the fact that they're underpopulated. If they were to eliminate one of those schools, that would be bad for everyone. So, we decided that a preemptive strike to, you know, to get the word out now rather than wait until public hearings saying that one of our schools on the chopping block is the best bet for us.
Are they going to send you by mail?
They, I believe, posted online. They, they deducted us very much information how they are disseminating this.
What is this, where was that, who's the owner?
I'm not sure if it is offhand. If you reach out to Spring Garden Elementary, they should be able to let you know. We, all of us are appointed by the actual principals of the school, so...
Get on the fact.
That a bar should get them.
So, I just wanted to make that point out there, you know, as these surveys come out, they said last time they sent out a survey, there was only a few hundred respondents. Let's get the word out, let's make sure Hampstead is well-represented. If it's even possible that they're going to come after one of our schools, we need to make sure that they know that we're not going to sit down for them.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for me?
Tammy.
You didn't?
Put it on the website.
News to you?
I know, and we have a community Facebook page.